Audience, let's rise and open the meeting with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody, in August 12th, 2019, Village Red Hook Monthly Board Meeting. Well, this will be the normal monthly meeting. We'll go through committee reports. I see a new face out there to me, anyway, some regular attendees. Trustee Trapp is traveling, so he can't make it, so we'll work with the four of us. As is usual, we'll start with a review and approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. And there were two of them in July. One was July 8th, and one was the 18th. The reviewed minutes have been circulated to the board. Were there any other additions, alterations, or corrections? Hearing none, I would move that we accept the minutes from the 8th and 18th of July. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Moving, the other person, we have a new face here. Our regular clerk treasurer is on vacation this week. It is August, and tends to be when people do that thing. So filling in tonight is our deputy clerk, Lara Hart. So she runs planning board and ZBA meetings, so she's a good assistant to us all here. Anyway, I'll read the treasurer's report. It's in your packets. As of the 12th of August, which would be today, we're showing a general fund balance. Said to report it dipped below the million-dollar mark here, which we always joke, we like to see it above that. As far as when our fiscal year flips, we get over that number. But the balance in general fund is $979,543. Water fund, we have $119,731. Trust and agency, $19,168. You'll see a zero in materials management. That reflects the fact that at the end of last fiscal year, we closed that out and rolled it into general fund. You will note in the voucher packs, there's a fifth voucher folder there that we're moving the final balance from the materials management fund into the general fund. So that's why it reads zero, and from now on, really, there shouldn't be a line for that anymore. Petty cash, $49.01. Village Green, $4,149. Hard Scrabble, $9,609. Health insurance, $11,044. Sewer fund, $30,260. And then Cindy's added a new report in the money market for the USDA Reserve, Short-Term Asset Reserve Fund. Expenses, again referencing the vouchers, general fund, there's $331,571 in expenses. But you will note in there that there's $155,000. That's a principal payment for the bond on this building. And there's an interest payment in there. I think it was $10,000 or $12,000, if I remember the numbers correctly. So it's about $165,000, $167,000. So that's about half of the monthly expenses there. That's a one-time per year. I guess there is, will be a second interest payment of about that same amount, but the principal payment is a one-time, one per year. And like we've said in other meetings, I think for the year 2021, that bond gets paid off. So that'll be $170,000. That'll be no longer an expense for the village on an annual basis, which should be very nice. Water fund expenses were $31,041. Trust and agency expenses were $19,168. And like we said, materials management, nothing was run through that on the expense side. Sewer, there were no expenses. And she has here a different water reserve, $16,365. I think that's a reserve we have sitting on the old elevated tank that was created years and years, way before our time. And as usual, attached are the details. And I know the trustees to my left are going through the vouchers to get them signed. Brent and I have been through them already. There were some in there that I further tagged Brent for Dazney for the grant. Folks in the audience and on TV, right now our parking lot's closed. Doesn't matter if you're watching on TV, but if you tried to get here tonight, it's a problem. But you might recall, we bought that lot five or six years ago through a grant from the state of New York. And we had about $70,000 left in the grants, and parts of the lot had worn out and so forth. And we're improving the drainage. We've upgraded the ornamental lighting and some wiring for our celebrations events. And tomorrow, they're supposed to put pavement down. And even though the sign says it'll be closed till Thursday, it should hopefully be open by the end of business tomorrow. And it'll get painted and striped, I think, a week from today, actually, but it'll still be usable in that interim. Anyway, back to the treasurer's report. We've got, I recited the numbers there. Going through the vouchers, they made sense to me, and I signed them. So, yeah, Rob, so I would move that we accept it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? On favor?
Just one.
Mr. Brent was jumping in. Okay.
On the sewer fund, did we take care of the change order from CT Mail on that one?
No. We kind of got interrupted from the discussion to the vote, so on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We could break our routine. I think I saw a fireman face come in. Coming up is our next section will be police report, law enforcement, including fire company. So if you want to say anything, unfortunately, our mic, remote mic died.
So here is the report for the monthly call for July. We had 110, I think, 66 fire, 66 EMS and 44 fires broke down on the printout there. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Everybody knows we have a 100-year anniversary coming up this weekend, so.
Yeah, right.
So I hope that'll be a good turnout from the town.
Yeah, hopefully. How's the weather looking? Are you looking?
I haven't even had a chance to, I just got here from work, so I apologize for my appearance.
That's right.
I haven't even had a chance to look at the weather, so. I would like to ask when your next workshop is, because there's a couple of things we sat in on a couple of times, and it kind of went by the wayside with everything going on, so I would like to attend.
Sure. I'll tell you, to be upfront, the next one is this week, believe it or not, Thursday, this workshop week. But it's pretty heavily booked. And then, so then it'd be, if you can wait a month, or we could sit together before. But workshop, it's the third Thursday.
Third Thursday?
Yeah.
So that would be the 17th of September.
If you're looking, it's.
It's nothing new. It's all stuff that we spoke about in the past, how we're looking to help with the grant, maybe on.
Yeah, Rob Frye brings that up. And later on tonight, we're looking at some grant on what we call resiliency with regard to water. And I did mention to our engineers, where we could fold that, what we've been talking about into it. It didn't seem necessarily that it could fit into this one, but it was a. And we did talk about it at one meeting, whether we could roll it into a block grant. But that's federal money that comes through the counties, but that's not really, doesn't fit what we can do with that anymore. It's, we've hit a certain threshold of income strength in the village. Where we're pretty much restricted to American Disability Act compliance, funding, funded type things. But come anyway, I mean, we'll talk about.
Yeah, we have a couple of things we'd like to discuss with you off the record.
Sure.
You know, some issues that we've discussed in some of our other meetings, so.
Sure.
You guys have any questions for the fire company?
What's the schedule for this weekend?
So Friday night, we're just doing food. And there's a band. I can't remember the order of the band. I think it's the butlers there. You guys have them here. I think it's Friday night. And then, so Saturday, parade step-off is at 5:00 PM. So we've been coordinating with anybody that's come to the 100-year anniversary from the village. I believe my father's been there, Danny. Step-off's at 5:00. We hope to have it all wrapped up by 7:00, roll in this music, let people eat. I think awards are going to be around 8:30, I believe, and then fireworks probably 9:00, 9:15, whenever dusk falls. So that, I'm sorry, that's Saturday. So and then there's a band playing Saturday through the fireworks. You're going to start after the parade, break for the awards, and then pick back up for a little while after fireworks. Hope to see everybody there.
It'll be good. We've been attending the monthly, now there are probably two-week meetings and.
Yeah, yeah, they're every two weeks now, they're coming down in the end, so.
Yeah, this one tomorrow night is according to my calendar, so.
I believe there is, yes. And we're doing work each hour over there, just about every night, so. What they said with the county is that it's the biggest one in like 20 years. We have two companies having a 100-year anniversary, so it's a pretty big deal, I guess.
Yeah.
Forward to it.
Yes, as last count that I saw, there's 40 fire companies in there. And what was interesting to me was, it's a very highly protocol-oriented parade. Like, they're actually judged by, I guess, their uniform, their marching, and.
They're more judges, yeah, so it's a pretty formal thing.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting. But, and the route, we could probably, for people watching and for everybody here, it starts at the Linden Avenue Middle School, High School parking areas, becomes a little different route than we normally use. It'll come down Park Avenue to pick up Route 9, and then come straight down 9 to Firehouse Lane, and turn left into Firehouse Lane, so it'll be right through the village center.
Going the opposite way from what we normally do.
Yeah, it's.
It's a little different than Memorial Day parades.
Because they have so many big rigs that have to end up somewhere in the.
I noticed they posted warning signs. I come in off 199, and there's a sign out there saying that expect delays on Saturday for the parade.
Danny got a couple LED DOT signs to warn traffic, so hopefully we can avoid congestion. At the light, at least, you know, people can take some different routes, so.
Yeah, that's a good story, too, because the county, we went to them, but with the fair being the next Sunday, Monday, you know, they've got a lot of their, I think they're called VMSs. It's an acronym for the mobile signs. So we reached out to Kevin Cahill, our assembly person. He got us in touch with Ulster County Highway Department. And they had some that were not booked to the same level, so Dan, he got them already then?
I'm assuming he did.
Went out here on the east side.
It's 1919.
Yeah, so.
So again, it's Friday night and Saturday night, for any public that's watching. We'll be there. I think we're going to start selling food and amusing around 5:00, 6:00 o'clock Friday. And again, the step-off is at, I believe, 5:00 o'clock on Saturday, so.
Cool. Well, thanks for bringing in the report. Thanks for what you do, and we'll.
And just pencil me in there for the September.
Yeah, sounds good.
Maybe I'll touch base. I think I got promoted to doing the village report from now on.
Oh, really? Instead of Mr. Frye?
Yeah. Another perk of being on the board of the town.
Well, that's good.
So I'll talk about it again, just to bring it up next time.
Okay, man.
All right?
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. See you this weekend.
Yep.
I think I'll give that to you, Ms. Clerk.
So we usually do that, where you interrupt so they can get out. But where I was headed next was a different version of emergency services, the police report for the month of July. Incidents seem to linger around the same count, sort of like the fire company. It's about, they're about 100, and the police are about a similar number, lingering around a number that's higher. But total incidents between all calls and everything was 388. It breaks out 260 for the Village of Red Hook, 116 for the Town of Red Hook, and 12 in the Village of Tivoli. Tickets resulting during that month were 119, breaks out 81 in the village, 12 of those were parking tickets, and 38 in the Town of Red Hook. Arrests were 15, breaks out eight in the village, and seven in the town. Other parts of my section on this committee report area. Later on, we will talk about personnel and probably go into executive session, too, on that. And with that, I think, like we said, trustee Trapp's not here. Maybe Jenna, you have your papers in front of you, and I'll look for Trapp's papers.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thankfully, Rob gave the whole spiel about the firemen, the firefighters' celebration this weekend, so I don't need to repeat that. Our big event is coming up, which is Hard Scrabble Day, Saturday, September 21st. For information or to become a vendor, go to hardscrabbleday.org. Our parade marshal is going to be Ben from Village Pizza. We had to figure out what his last name was, because we just call him Village Ben. And our main stage entertainment is going to be John Waite, so it should be a good day for that. And they already talked about the fire department. Okay. Materials management, for the month of July, we sold $2,586 in tags and paid out $937.49. We had 8.71 tons of garbage and 3.19 tons of recycling, which broke down as follows. 1.73 tons of commingled, 0.33 tons of cardboard, and 1.13 tons of paper. A reminder, we now have to sort the recycling. Commingled is collected every other week, which alternates with paper and separated cardboard. They must be separated. But we are recycling, so. That's all I have. It was a short month.
That's it? All right. I will, I have the planning and zoning reports that Jay normally goes over. Lara is the admin person that prepares it. It looks like, as Jay reads it, it's obviously the same categories. Building permits issued, total of nine, list the locations. Certificates of occupancy issued, one. Certificate of compliance, five. Municipal searches, two. Orders to remedy, two. No-stop work orders, no court appearances. Looks like fire inspections, four, and then they have a list, and all the Baywright Realty properties. As far as complaints, there were three. It's like ranging from property maintenance, abandoned vehicle, and something on South Broadway, not named, but says has been remedied. Planning board actions, there's a July 11th meeting. Signage application was denied for a property at 27 Firehouse Lane, application tabled to August 8th. And public hearing set for August 8th for a minor subdivision application for property located at 7468 South Broadway. And it gives a tax parcel number. So the public hearing. You normally notify the adjacent folks on that? Is that what happens on a public hearing for?
That just goes in the paper.
Oh, yeah, okay. As far as the ZBA, we have the chair out in our audience. July 3rd, 2019 meeting, public hearing for an area variance application for a property located at 7468-7476 South Broadway. Sounds like the same one that's having a public hearing. So it says, let's see, public hearing for area variance. And then July 25th, the same month, an area variance approval granted to that property at 7468 South Broadway. So they came in twice in that month, had two meetings in one month. As far as revenue generated from those permits and applications and so forth. And fire inspections, looks like $1,810 for the month. I would think at that number, though, the Baywright property inspections are not in there, the fire inspections.
Yeah.
And that is the planning zoning department report. We could then move to water. I know we have the report. Charlie, do you have it in front of you yet?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. Why don't you go ahead, sir?
Sure. So the Village Red Hook Water Treatment Facility's monthly report. During the month of July, the water treatment facility treated 7,634,200 total gallons, which is an average of 246,300 gallons per day. That's still relatively high, but not getting higher from last month, fortunately. There were, three samples were taken and sent out for testing for bacteriological contaminants, and they all came back clean. And as far as the chemical usage goes, the water treatment plant used 70 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. The average daily use was 2.26 gallons per day, which is very standard. And then, you know, we still have some issues, outstanding issues related to the elevated storage tank, and some metering issues which needs to be.
Yeah. What we can do in the regular business, we do have some water issues there in the agenda, so we can talk about those things. But yeah, like Charlie said, 246,300, it's on the moderate side of high, you know. It's a, we were down, we're around 201s for a while here. So it gives one cause to wonder, is there something we're not seeing?
We have to go to lawns.
Yeah.
It's been.
I don't drive.
It's funny, though, I don't see lawns as a big thing. I have some towns and neighborhoods, people are really into irrigation and watering. Didn't seem that big a deal on Red Hook to me, but.
Oh, gardens.
Yeah, gardens, I could see. But anyway, could be part of it. And if it's 10% or 15%, but we'll see once watering season ends, right? And like you all know, we use VRI as our water operator. And when Charlie mentions open work orders and things, they've been the ones we're dealing with. And then we have engineers on some of the bigger issues. The highway department is looking, and Brent's probably touched on it. Along Bennet Road, there's about seven or nine private residences that we want to tie into a six-inch main that already exists. And that's been scheduled, but hasn't quite happened yet. I think, are you talking about that in your report? Or, I'll talk about that, and I talked to Dan a little bit more today. It looks like middle of next week they'll do it. I think we probably should get, just in case, printed notice to those folks. We're not cutting driveways like we did in Phase 2 or anything. It's just digging down, giving a new curb valve, corporate valve connection to our main and getting it up to the house.
It just serves as connections, not doing laterals or mains.
Right, and we don't need a DOH to chlorinate and test and pressure test. We're living off our existing main. But anyway, I'm not sure if the Bennet Road people watch Panda, but we'll try to get the notice out to you, too.
We also have that new user on Old Farm Road, Traditions. They're keeping their lawns very green.
Are they? You know?
Yes. Well, you got to. They show houses.
Yeah. I haven't driven in there lately, but we will be reading that meter in September, so we'll see what that pulls. Okay, good. And then we would roll to Mr. Kavalec. Are you ready?
Yes, sir. I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of July 31st. Ours follows, community beautification. We have $4,000. Shatri contractual, we have $10,500. And as mentioned in our treasurer's report, the Village Green Committee checking account has $4,192.92 as a balance. Five yards of wood chips have been delivered to Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. The wood chips will be placed around existing trees to protect the trunks and also to hold the moisture. Village Green Committee Officer David Pearson has volunteered to move and place the chips around the trees at the park. So those are these young trees that we have, and it's a way to keep, you know, them protected by, from the lawn mowers, and also, since it's been so dry, to keep the moisture into the ground. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of July. And as always, residents and/or businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent street right-ofways are interested in donating money to the Village Green Committee's community beautification projects, may contact myself, David Pearson, or the village clerk, and we'll be happy to take your name down and add you to our list. The highway monthly report for July. The highway department is currently picking up brush and laundry debris on every first and third Monday of the month. And this is all dependent on their schedule and time permitting, but they usually get around to it. And I noticed they did it last week, the first Monday of the month. Residents are reminded to place laundry debris curbside and not in the street. And please limit the size of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree branches no larger than six inches in diameter. And brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, grass clippings, or building materials will not be picked up. The highway department repaved portions of Kent Road and Cambridge Drive on July 19th. The approximately $70,000 project cost will be deducted from this fiscal year's maintenance of streets, budget accounts, and all chips, general fund budget lines. So I think we made those adjustments on, some of them, anyway, on the vouchers for this month. Two catch basins on East Market Street and three catch basins on West Market Street have been repaired. The concrete sidewalk and paving restorations have also been completed. The estimated cost of $11,500 plus additional costs to provide an additional catch basin frame and grate also come from the maintenance of street budget line, and that would be the one, chips we can't use for that one. And no revenue was generated during the month of July for scrap metal. Since we started the program back in 2007, we've generated $28,707.47. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, materials management, and water departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the highway department at 758-8600, or the village clerk's office. And the highway department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Inter-Municipal Task Force monthly report for July. There's some updates on the sewer projects. Meetings were held on July 12th and 19th at the village building. We reviewed the general status of the project. Also, final edits and review of the responses and revised contract documents to Dutchess County Department of Health. They had comments of July 19th, and we did submit those to the DOH. Responses to peak day flows and emergency septic tank and wastewater treatment capacities were addressed. A final review from Dutchess County is anticipated last week, which we did not get. We understand there's still some more stuff pending, so we'll get those and address those. But we've been at DOH since April of 2018, and we're hoping soon to move forward. We also reviewed the critical path for the sewer project. Once Dutchess County Department of Health approves a project, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation will review the village's applications and issue an amended speedies permit. The amended speedies permit is required before transfer of the speedies permit from the Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation to the Village of Red Hook is complete. The DEC approvals are necessary, again, to complete for the donation transfer of the Red Hook Commons Treatment Plan and Property to the Village of Red Hook. Requests for bid proposals are anticipated to be issued in mid-November of 2019, with bid openings and awards in mid-December of 2019. And if all goes as anticipated, construction of the Red Hook Sewer Project could begin by February 2020. An 18-month construction schedule, which will put us in July of 2021, is anticipated for substantial and final completion of the project. So we've been very patient with Dutchess County DOH so far.
Yeah, we look at options, but.
It's ridiculous. Anyway, Red Hook Village Water Project Phase 2 meeting was held on July 12th in the village building. It was brought to the village's attention that the interconnect between the water distribution systems of the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Red Hook is not properly functioning. Emergency supply and water storage is necessary to keep the village water customers sufficiently supplied with water during emergency or catastrophic situations. We looked at three options to provide for water supply. One was to remediate and repaint the interior of the Tower Street Elevated Storage Tank and continue to use it. This option would also include installing a carbon filter at the existing Firehouse Lane Treatment Plant. And the second option was to reevaluate the Red Hook Town and Red Hook Village Interconnect system. And the third option would be to combine the Red Hook Town and the Red Hook Village water supply and distribution systems. The village, after looking at all three options, is considering applying for the EDC. It's actually EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation Drinking Water Emergency Contaminant Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant for the amount between $1.5 and $1.8 million to pursue the option to repair the Red Hook Town/Red Hook Village Interconnect, repaint the interior of the Tower Street Elevated Water Storage Tank, and add a carbon filtration system to the Firehouse Lane Water Treatment Plant. The application requires the village board of trustees to approve the bond resolution and complete the seeker, which would be a Type 2 action review process. The application is due on or before September 13th, so I think that's probably on your list of things to talk about.
Right.
Yeah, another project we're working on is the Route 9 and Old Farm Road water loop connection. The revised, Dutchess County DOH application revised plans were issued to the Dutchess County Department of Health on July 26. County Department of Health on July twenty-sixth. The Water Loop Project will connect dead-end water mains outside of the village. This will provide more efficient, safer, and easily repaired water distribution services to properties along Old Farm Road and South Broadway, north of M&amp;T Bank. The costs associated with the project will be paid by private property owners benefiting from village municipal water connections. The cost for permitting and construction oversight will be paid by the Village of Red Hook. So that's underway. We're still, again, waiting on DOH, right?
Yeah, I actually have a letter from them that they have our paperwork.
That they have it, that's good.
I know, but that's what we had from them with the sewer, like you said, April of 2018.
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah, this one says dated July thirty-one. From a new name, Eva Foka.
Two thousand what?
Nineteen.
That's current, okay.
Dear Mayor, this letter is to inform you that project documents have been received for the above property on July twenty-sixth. Please note that the project has been added to the list for review, and as listed applicant, you will be copied in any correspondence. So added to a list does not sound too good, but that's the letter.
All right. On the intermunicipal task force side, both Charlie and Charlie Lang and myself represent the Village of Red Hook. The intermunicipal task force met on July nineteenth at Red Hook Town Hall, and we were and continue to discuss the, the use of existing and/or new accessory buildings for short-term rentals. This is being considered for Class III structures, which are one to two bedrooms located in an existing accessory building on a single-family owned occupied lot. We're also considering use of accessory buildings on lots with frontages on state, county, or through-town roads, and considering regulations for short-term rentals, including setback and side yard restrictions. The goal of the task force is to propose adoption by the Red Hook Town Board of a balanced and reasonable regulations governing short-term rentals, allowing citizens to share the economic benefit of their property while protecting and preserving neighborhood character and long-term housing availability. It's a pretty complicated thing, so we've been looking at it. We know Rhinebeck, the Village of Rhinebeck just passed their short-term rental regulations, and it seems like each municipality has unique conditions, so we're looking at that, and hopefully the village will take what we can from the town and apply it to the Village of Red Hook at some point. Shared Services, monthly reports, these are some committees I sit on in the town of Red Hook. The Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, there were no meetings held during the month of July. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, we had a meeting on July twenty-fourth at Red Hook Town Hall, and we reviewed applications from Winnekee Land Trust on behalf of properties owned by Rural Joy Incorporated, located on Route Nine G near Aspen Wall, Kelly, and Walesback Road in Red Hook, and a parcel by Migliaurelli located on or to the rear of Aspen Wall Road to the Red Park West in Red Hook. The properties encompass numerous ecological significant wetlands and biodiversity areas of 7,333 feet, which is the combined total of this, near the Salt Kill River. The parcels are included in an approved grant of $952,173 for land acquisition by the Winnekee Land Trust for the primary purpose of protecting local water supplies under the Water Quality Improvement Program administered by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The application that was submitted to the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board is for a twenty-five percent matching grant from the CPF for the Town of Red Hook to purchase conservation easements over all four of the listed properties for the primary purposes of water quality protection, ecologically significant habitat protection, public access and recreation in perpetuity, consistent with those activities permitted under the terms of the state required covenants. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board recommended to the Red Hook Town Board allocating $272,160.61 to purchase the easements and associated transactional costs. And this all comes from the CPF, the Community Preservation Fund. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of July thirty-first is $1,451,594.12. The Salt Kill Watershed Community Monthly Report, Salt Kill Watershed Community Meeting was held on July seventeenth in the Elmhurst Inn. Presentations by Eric Caveat, who's the executive director of Hudsonia, did a presentation, what do you do it on, presented the results of the Hudsonia recently completed study of the Salt Kill Habitat and Wildlife Study. The Winnekee Land Trust Salt Kill Land Acquisition Project was presented. The Bard College Water Lab Flow Cams Adventure at Sea and the Red Hook Sewer Project Updates were also presented. I did that little quick update on the sewer project. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee, there were no Northern Dutch Alliance meetings held during the month of July. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group, there were no meetings held during the month of July. And the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, Ray Towell, Jay Trapp, and myself sit on that board. We met on July twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth in the Village Building. We reviewed and proposed amendments of the accessory uses and special permitted uses in the village's general business district. We also reviewed uses from the Neighborhood Mixed Use District and the Highway Business District that may be included in the recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees for amendment considerations to the zoning law. The Zoning Review Committee in the Village of Red Hook is reviewing a proposal to expand the general business district to include nineteen properties in the R10,000 district and existing highway business district. The Zoning Review Committee is also reviewing a proposal to expand the Neighborhood Mixed Use District to include an additional six properties on South Broadway and one property on Elizabeth Street near the Chocolate Factory. So I did draft a letter, and I went through Dutchess County Parcel Access, listed all the properties and parcel ID numbers, and that final letter, once approved by the committee, will be issued to the board for your consideration. So we've been working very hard on these, and this recommendation will probably come forward before we finalize all the amendments for the zoning, just to get this stuff in place. So we're working hard on that. We meet, try to meet every week. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. It's a lot. Even though a few no meetings were in there, there's still a lot. One or two questions I had, Brent, on the ZRC for, R, ZRC. On your second paragraph B, I just curious, you're reviewing, it says there are nineteen properties in the R10,000 and existing highway business. Are those nineteen?
East Market Street.
What are they, nineteen and, total nineteen in either zone? Like in other words.
Total nineteen in R10,000, and then there's additional properties in the entire highway business district.
Okay. The nineteen reflects what's in the R10.
Just in the R10,000. So there's a strip of residential properties between the, the existing general business district and the highway business district that will all be served by the central sewer. So we're trying to give them, you know, benefit of more additional uses to their properties.
Yep.
So that's, that'll be up to the board to consider.
And on your report about the town CPF, I'm glad to see they might be spending some of that 1.4 million, but what, how do they evaluate or put a value on the easement rights on multiple properties? Is there market value, or what is?
Yeah, they, they do an evaluation of the properties.
They would do appraisals.
Yeah.
Appraisals done that value the, the value of the development rights.
And that's part of the cost that the town will cover. There's legal costs associated with that, so that money would all come from there. And with the grant, with this particular grant from the DEC, there was a twenty-five percent matching obligation, so that would, that's why they came forward to the town to use the Community Preservation Fund for that.
Okay, good. That wraps up department slash committee reports. We'd move into regular business. I see a face behind, sometimes we like to get folks out if they need to be somewhere fast, but uh, I don't know, you, the one guy keeps moving the opposite way of you. Oh, Hobson. Yeah, you might have heard, I don't know if your ears perked up, but when you came in two meetings ago, that zoning review committee is looking at the.
You guys are hard at work.
Yeah, they're, they're.
No, we're looking at, I think you came up with your property, and then the six going south, that would be Migliaurelli's Griff's Deli, and then coming down and connecting into the Nmu. So there's just those little bit of properties, and then the Hobson property by the Chocolate Factory there, that's being considered, too. So again, it's up to the board, and we'll make the final submission, but the heavy lifting has basically been done, so we just want to run the draft letter to the committee, and next step be to, to the board.
Just have more curiosity, I think, when you came two meetings ago, I think there was a Mr. Kerner with you, did he pass away since then?
He did, two weeks after that meeting.
Yeah, because we, I saw something, I was like, wow, holy mackerel.
Yeah, we spoke a nice day, and unfortunately, yeah.
Wow. I thought, sad turn of events, man. Okay. But, yeah. All right, so.
Your place looks good, by the way, down with the work you've done on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Organized.
But I, I don't know if you want to say, but I didn't know what your all interest was, but it's, okay. So he's, yeah, we took the input and they're working on something. Okay. Okay. Let's see, so we'll move to regular business. What I have handed out tonight, and we've cycled it to council and so forth, but it's regarding our community solar energy project, where we've had a lot of meetings on the lease progress process, rather, and getting things lined up in that regard. And then we're also going to be a customer of the energy produced by the community solar farm. So we do get some revenue generated from leasing the ground out to the sponsors, and then we will partake in some savings. It still looks like it's in a ten to eleven percent savings, as far as projected against what other markets are pushing out there for the actual cost of electricity. And that's consistent with what we've been told all along, and you might remember we were moving, because that number is subject to change as world market conditions and different things in the investment world change, so we, we've pushed and got the leases lined up, and now we're being shown what the savings can be and what we would, would do to, to purchase from that entity. We all were committed to it and all agree, what I did, I developed a resolution, I think Claire has it in your packet, it's numbered number thirty-four, handwritten number thirty-four, and it ties in with about a, I don't know, ten or twelve-page document here. This is in the acronym world called the PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement. Essentially, like I said, we sent it off to council. In most levels, substantial levels, we concur and we're okay with it. Somewhere in here, I wanted to point out, there is some wording, and I didn't yell or highlight it, but I'll have to find it, but they did, remember, we had incurred some costs to do some tree clearing and certain things early in the project. We have been fully reimbursed for that by the sponsor, which is Sun Common, to the tune of about $16,000. That was our time, tub grinder rental, different things. In the actual PPA, it's one they took from the town, and I think we have the lingering word document sentence that stays, that should have been stricken. It says that Sun Common will reimburse the town, and they use the word town, not village. And like I said, we've been reimbursed, so they don't owe us any money, so I'm going to ask that they strike that, send it to them. But I think on all substantial levels, we're good. If you look, they, they give a schedule of, we use, now, I guess, let's go to page one just for everybody. You can see the meter accounts that we'll be using to supply here at our municipal facilities, meaning our Village of Red Hook facilities. Where if you add those percentages, we're going to be about taking seventy, excuse me, seven percent of the power generated by the array, which is a pretty significant number. Then you all might recall, we've been having those promo and celebration types of events where our village residents are being enticed to join in with the remaining power that's left for about 250 households. What I've heard is they sold about half of them so far, so that's a good number. We're trying to get as many local, local people to buy in, and then it gets diversified out to county and further, you know, but it's, that's a pretty good number, and I think they're having in the next three days in Town Hall, they're promoting an info session, and I don't know if you've seen emails about it, but they're trying to get folks to come in and learn more. So anyway, we're taking about seven percent of the power. We would be saving ten to eleven percent over the years. And to me, one of the bigger parts of it, it's, it's great, of course, to have monetary savings, but it's locally generated, and it's clean and green, and it's, we're getting some revenue from them on our well site rental. A lot of it is boilerplate. It's essentially, we're dealing with investors who are funding the project, the town. Another technicality is the town, when, when Sun Common was selected, it was through an RFP, and you will recall in our code, we, about a year ago, passed the ability we can piggyback off contracts and RFPs of other municipalities. And we did have our engineers, when the RFPs were opened and reviewed, our engineers were part of that review process. So you'll see in, in the resolution, I talked about that a little bit. What I'd like to do is read it, and if it so pleases the board, I'd like to adopt this tonight, and then we can get it, and so we're in the list of customers and get things moving. As you might recall, they're looking to get this thing built by about January and generating power by about February, so it's, should be good. But in our packet, we do have the resolution. It starts with referencing tonight's meeting, August twelfth, here in the building. We have, we'll do a roll call when we vote, but then there's who puts forth the motion, but let's just go over the resolution itself. It's titled Resolution Authorizing Execution of the Community Distributed Generation Credit Purchase Agreement. A lot of technical jargon there. With project purchase option, with Red Hook CSA, that's the formal legal name of the sponsor that's actually owning and operating the plant, Red Hook CSA LLC regarding community distributed generation solar project. We have a few whereas's. The village has been working with the Town of Red Hook and the village to find ways to promote and utilize renewable energy systems for homes, businesses, and community municipal entities. Whereas pursuant to a joint application, this is referencing the MIG, Brent, that we got many years ago. Pursuant to a joint application, the town and village of Red Hook received the MIG to study feasibility. Then the town, next whereas, the town and village identified a village-owned wellsite area as a potentially underutilized location where we could co-look, co-locate solar facilities. And in connection with county-funded studies, Central Hudson did advise that planning to use the village wellsite would be favorable, and that interconnection costs would be significantly less than almost all other locations in the town. Whereas the town issued an RFP dated January fourteenth, 2019, on behalf of itself, I have a word or there, so we have to change that to an F, on behalf of itself and the Village of Red Hook to identify a potential project sponsor and determine a financially feasible project co-located at the village's wellsite. Double-sided thing here. Whereas the RFP solicited proposals for a power purchase agreement with a project sponsor that would lease property in the town owned by the village and construct a 1.73 megawatt AC community solar array thereon, which agreement was intended to provide for a potential municipal purchase of locally generated clean power in order to maximize the potential cost savings for the municipalities, protect the wellsite, and reduce fossil fuel consumption. Whereas after review of the proposals received and based on the evaluation criteria provided in the RFP, the Town Board authorized the commencement of negotiations with Solar Community CSA LLC of Vermont Corporation, and that should be a DBA, doing business as, Sun Common, for a project sponsor agreement as described in the RFP. And whereas the Village of Red Hook procurement code includes the ability to piggyback off the RFP process of the town and the town contractual decisions. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Red Hook has determined that entering into the Community Distributed Generation Credit Purchase Agreement, and we'll call that the PPA. and we'll call that the P P A, regarding Community Distributed Generation Solar P V project as developed under piggybacking and shared service concepts between the village and Red Hook C S A LLC, we have an extra W we'll take out. It is in the best interest of the village. Whereas the P P A sets forth the terms and conditions of the delivery of and payment for community distributed generation credits and value of distributed energy resources credit, together with C D G credits allocated to the village's listed accounts. So that references the front page and price based on the metered electrical output from the solar panel system described in the P P A. So again, on the back of the front page is the pricing list and so forth. Whereas the village has lead agency in a coordinated environmental review of the solar P V project, determined that the project is an unlisted action under seeker and adopted a negative declaration on June 17, 2019, determining that the project will not have an adverse impact on the environment. It looks like I skipped where, one whereas above that. I think I did skip this one. Whereas providing clean energy at a reduced cost to the town and village is of great importance, is the basis of the shared services project as it will benefit the town and village financially and reduce the negative impacts associated with fossil fuel consumption. And the project will serve the public by helping improve the quality of life of future generations. Whereas the village of Red Hook adopted a resolution, June 17, 2019, Monroe Resolution, making findings regarding the applicability of the town zoning regulations to the project. And whereas the village of Red Hook has received and signed a lease for the well site area with Red Hook C S A LLC for monetary rents separate from the P P A. Now therefore be it resolved by the village board of the village of Red Hook, Duchess County, New York. Number one, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the P P A in the form attached with such changes, with such changes as shall be approved by the mayor and which do not affect the substance thereof. Number two, the mayor, clerk or other officers, employees or agents are authorized and directed for and in the name and on behalf of the village to do all acts and things required of, provided by the provisions of the P P A. Number three, the resolution shall take effect immediately. So essentially what we're saying is, I do want to change those one or two sentences I mentioned that are just typo related things. The three misplaced letters in here, I can clean up in a Word document and get a cleaner version. But I would offer it as a motion for a second for more discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, as I said, to, to me, it's more movement forward in the process and we're perfecting what we've been looking for.
This resolution has to do with the community, the C D G disagreement here, the final execution of this document as well?
That's, that's the document, yes.
So the, as far as the effective date, would that be today's date then?
Yeah, on the top, yes.
August 12th, okay.
See what he's referencing in this page here.
Then the signatures will be following, I guess, right?
Yeah, like I said, there is a page.
The front page has signatures on.
Yeah, right at the bottom of it. But I do, I did point out to Sun Common that somewhere that one sentence needs to be taken out. I'll have to find it again.
Resolution?
No, in, in the document, it was something where they talk about reimbursing the town. I thought we could put in that they reimburse the village, you know, something, they just have the wrong municipality there.
Be important for them to reimburse the village.
But looking at it, you know, some of our meters, like our wellfields, if you look at, in the page one there, historic annual average consumption, you know, the waterworks is a big number.
Real quick, so on exhibit one, it's on the back of the first page, number five, I think that refers to your.
You found it, yeah, there it is.
Reimbursement?
Yeah.
That would be reimbursed the village of Red Hook, right?
Yeah, exhibit one, number five. Yeah, what I thought we'd change it to is on the date of execution and delivery of this agreement. It's something we have been reimbursed, so they can either, if they don't owe us any money, the town at that point hadn't been reimbursed, so they're making that a part of the agreement.
They reimbursed us this month then, or?
I think it was last month. Came in, they hand delivered a check. So anyway, I've read the resolution. Council's read through what we'll call the boilerplate. And I think we're good to go. Got motion, a second, any other thoughts, discussion? Call vote, it does call for roll call votes, so Ed Blundow, I will vote yes. Mr. Kovalcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Ms. Norris?
Yes.
And I will mark, Mr. Trapp is absent. Thank you. My next item says Waterloo, Brent touched on it, I think we hit it all, that we, we've sent something we've been working on for a while to the county and we'll just have to stay on top of them. This is where we will sell water if and when the Ross property ever develops and if Baywright develops anything. But at their cost, we're laying a main and laying a master meter, they will pay more than the village rate payer pays for water rate. It's a, and it's the same deal as Tradition slash Hoffman Farm has as far as the rate. But for now, I don't know when the first drop of water will be taken from it, but the loop will exist. And that's one of the things we feel is important because right now the Tradition's neighborhood is fed off the Red Hook Estates neighborhood, the main coming through there and if there were a problem with that main, there's no alternate way to get water in. So we think it's a win-win for the parties. Staffing changes, inputs and ideas, we're circulating, we know Ari retired, resigned on July 19th and we've been working, doing interviewing and looking for part-time, full-time, what, what our options will be. I thought maybe we go into executive session to be more specific about names and places and things like that. So, but just for the public, we are working out, and it is August vacation season, so it's, even our regular full-time staff are off on vacation and things, so we're working with some part-timer inserts. And some of them are, you know, candidates for the, what we end up doing. Brent, you're holding something up for me, what do you have there?
Another resolution?
Yeah, yeah. This is the intermunicipal agreement, town slash village. In your packet, something should be titled draft for discussion purposes only. Another resolution, since we're very smart, Lara, we'll probably call that number 35.
Yes.
So the, this, the P F O A, that would be for the grant, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just misspoke, I'm not that smart. Had the wrong resolution for me. Where is, let's see.
The intro, this one, right?
Yeah, can I see that one?
Oops, sorry, there's two pages.
Yeah. This one would be 35. What I was presented with about three weeks ago after one of our last meetings was when the town highway garage was built, it's my recollection, we did very formal shared services agreements with how we deal with them and that's very well documented and that's what about a eight or so year old project that we've been doing down there. But I do recall, Brent, maybe you might be able to fill in a little more. We do a lot of what I'll call ad hoc, impromptu shared agreements. In other words, Dan needs a truck to pull McAdam tomorrow to pave the parking lot, the town will give us a truck with a driver. But the town's lawyers has always been a little bit like, hey, you know, we should have something more formal. If Dan rolls the truck over or he's driving it or somebody gets hurt, and it's a valid point. So this agreement, they drew up, they being a town. It's designed to cover those less formal, more ad hoc, not really written in the long-term planning deals we make. And so if you look at it, even though the one says draft, the town passed it and you'll see McKean's signature on the signature page.
July 23rd, right?
So I thought we'd do is look it over and talk about it. I could, do y'all have it there? As far as the resolution itself, it's relatively brief, but we're calling it intermunicipal agreement, town of Red Hook and village of Red Hook regarding municipal shared services, highway and public works. So it's sort of defined in that area. Whereas the village of Red Hook and the town of Red Hook often work with routine shared services arrangements for ad hoc needs in order to best utilize equipment, vehicles and staff. And whereas the two municipalities agree that this is an important factor for effective and efficient staff management and cost containment. And whereas certain highway material purchases and fuel purchases are already shared under New York State contract with the town being the purchaser. And whereas no formal agreement exists to document the relationship other than regarding use and sharing of the highway garage complex. Whereas the village board recognizes the benefits of continued cooperation and use of shared services with the town. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign the intermunicipal agreement regarding municipal shared services dash highway department and public works. And I put a caveat to, however, each case or instance of shared services will be reviewed by the mayor and or highway foreman for feasibility and scheduling before approval. So we're not just opening the carpe plante, two employees decide to share a truck or, you know, so it's, it's got to come through some chain of command. And then the document itself, if one looks at it, it has for date on the top, it references general municipal section 5G, which enables municipalities to share services. And we say the municipalities have determined that the relative cost to be borne by each party constitute a reasonable allocation of costs. And this agreement will result in mutual cost savings. It does not require seeker. Let's see. That part, whereas the execution and delivery of this agreement has been determined under seeker to constitute a type two action, which will not have an adverse effect on the environment. As far as the heading of shared services, the municipalities agreed to cooperate in the shared services as determined from time to time in accordance with this agreement. They reference in exhibit A. Exhibit A talks more about shared services. Talks about types of activities, be mowing, park maintenance, tree trimming, vehicle equipment maintenance, leaf pickups, snow blowing. And then they do have an authorization, the mayor and such other officer, officers, they have that side there too. But I wanted to put it up in our enabling resolution. Then there is that exclusion, shared services covered by this agreement exclude other services which may be covered by separate agreements. Personnel, each municipality uses own personnel for purposes of this agreement. Services at cost, prior to undertaking work that is proposed to be compensated, the authorized officers will authorize such work in writing not to exceed a cost on a copy of, not, writing at a not to exceed cost and a copy of such approval shall be provided to supervisor town, supervisor of the town and treasurer of the village. I think it makes sense.
What data we put it on the agreement?
Pardon me?
What data we put it on the agreement?
I would do it today myself. It doesn't have to match up, they know our meeting dates don't match up, so today would be 12th day of August. So I read a resolution. I would move that we adopt resolution 35 and formalize a bit more of the shared services interaction with the town and us. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
You got that, Jen?
Pardon me? What'd you say, Brent?
Just asking if Jen got the second.
And I don't think we need a roll call on this, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I put on the agenda town water interconnect, Brent dealt with it quite a bit in the course of one of his pages there. And in essence, it was created 25 years ago in the form of a contract. And like Brent said, it was originally designed in cases of drought to set up a way where work could flow between the two munis. And what's concerning and confusing to me is we spent money in phase two of our water project to further improve the interconnect capability at where it all connects up on North Broadway into toward where the town pumping stations are. And like Brent said, I'll be more specific, we were looking to decommission our elevated tank maybe six to eight weeks ago. And we were going to use the floor base pressure of the town, because all our engineering told us, we run at 80 pounds per square inch pressure. We were of the belief that we would run about 20 pounds less by being in interconnect mode. People would notice it, but it'd still be a functional water system. And we thought that gave our engineers, they wanted to watch things as they took the elevated tank offline and study some of the pump performances. But they took the pump, the tank offline and started to take the, open up the interconnect and pressure plummeted to zero. And they were immediately turned, turned the tank back on and moved away from that experiment. They've since experimented with just the pumps running, the interconnect, not of, they can function without the tank, but there is a concern like, why didn't the interconnect work? Because it is our failsafe if something does go, goes south, we know we can go from 80 to 60, we can figure it out while we're looking at it, we still have water and so forth. So I've actually, a C T mail will come back Friday, Brent, at 11:30. My feeling is, hey, when phase two ended, that should have been working better than it ever worked. And I don't know why it didn't work. All of us have different jobs, but we don't know water valves and pumps and hydro geology and, not, that's not the wrong word, but the pressures and, you know, it all has to do with the elevation of our tank, their tank, our pumping capability. Long story short, like I keep saying, it should have worked, so we're going to see what they say. And even if the elevated tank were not issue, we still need to know if somebody blew a big time main failure or something. We can isolate the problem and still have water for most everybody, either in the town or for us. And it does raise the bigger question and it might have appeared in some notes, but who should run the water system, you know, in other words, should the village take it all over? And I would entertain that option, in other words, the town has some folks that run the water department, they use the same operator we use. And it might make sense, instead of doing another 25-year interconnect contract, to think about something where it's more of a big water system than just the village and the town. From what I can gather, the current supervisor is amenable to that, but I think more with us doing the lifting part. I don't think, I wouldn't recommend us giving up our water or our ability to run our water. But if we could run their water, could be worth it. And it might help us answer, we do get complaints and from the town customers we have out on the east side of the village, they pay a higher rate because there's no town water district over there and could help answer some of those questions. But anyway, two takeaways are Friday, we're going to have a meeting, the C T mail, why is the internet connect not working? And then it kind of segues into the last item on the agenda there. In our packets, we have some agendas and Brent might have to fill me in, I've been on a two week vacation and he's been covering the Fridays. But we're trying to set up a special meeting for August 28th, as I recall, I have to look at a calendar myself to make sure it's the right date. We're looking at another application to, like Brent said in his report, the Wia grants and the engineers have projected a cost range of 1.6 to 1.8 million. We're calling it a resiliency grant, we're trying to address the interconnect, the elevated tank. And then something we need to talk about too is, we were in that random sample where we did get a P F O A, P F O S test and it's in our annual water quality report where we got a two and a five reading, there was like 2.7 and 5.4, I think were the actual numbers of parts per trillion with a T and. And we got into a lottery, not because anybody suspected a problem, from what we can tell, nobody ever manufactured a product here that would generate that. It's our engineers feel, it's an endemic situation, if that's the right word, it's just a substance that's dispersed through the environment, it's not that there's a point source of it here. But we're talking in this grant of putting in a carbon filtration option, because right now the federal limit is 70 parts per trillion, the states, I thought had moved to a 10, but there is some thought they might go to a 2. 2 seems so low to me, I don't know if you see it in your water world, but...
Two per trillion?
Yeah, it's like, I don't know that you have machinery or instrumentation that could be that specific, but, I don't know, because, but, um, but like all grant applications, they are not necessarily commitments that we will do it, but if we can get 60% funding, we might be inclined to do it.
This is a new grant, it was recently just announced at the end of last month, so we're scrambling to get all the required documentation taken care of to submit.
Yeah.
It's happening very quickly, so we just thought it was a good opportunity, we have some needs on our water distribution system and...
Yeah, because you're right.
A good, a good option to pursue.
Brent, is it strictly PFOA related, or is it talking about disinfection byproducts and other things?
Well, they're talking about, it's, um...
Resiliency isn't...
It's not really PFOA, it's, it's new contamination, like, um, I think I mentioned in my report the actual name of it, but...
Did you say emerging contaminants?
Yeah, emerging contaminants, so it does cover PFOAs, but other things as well.
Probably pharmaceuticals and other things.
Yeah, I think that's, I think a lot of it's probably Long Island oriented with the water down there having pharmaceuticals. And I was thinking about it as I was driving, we did look at once, trying to filter out the magnesium on the, or east wells, and you end up with a byproduct of the filtration, where you have to at points in time get rid of the filtration medium. And I think, well, I don't know if that's the case with carbon filtration, but I assume at some point it's done and you have to move it. So who gets to be the lucky person that gets the carbon medium with the contaminants?
Well, that would be a very special disposal facility.
Yeah, so, uh, but I think we have to look at the option, and like Brent said, normally our WIA schedule is a different time of year and everything, this just came up in a meeting two, three weeks ago, like it's three weeks ago I was here. And we did pick at the workshop, that special meeting, because we have to try to get the application done, but it requires, the tricky part is a bond resolution, but I want to be clear, we're not gonna take a bond unless we get the grant. So we have to prep the field, meaning prep the groundwork that we can borrow if we are successful in getting the 60% grant, so...
And the bond resolution just needs to be, the initial bond resolution approved by the board, it doesn't have to go through the, to qualify for the grant application, doesn't have to go through the public review process, nor does it have to go through the estoppel process. So that itself will add probably a couple months to the whole schedule, but we just need to apply for the grant, the resolution that the board passed the bond resolution. It's still subject to permissive referendum and the estoppel process.
So today is the 12th, the special meeting, is there a calendar in front of you, Charlie? Is it 28th, Thursday? I think we picked this.
28th is a Wednesday.
I remember we went back and forth and we picked a day that was, is that the day you had in your notes? Do you remember? Remember, somebody couldn't make it Thursday that time. Does that ring anybody? Point is, the clerk will have to put a notice that there'll be a special meeting, and we need 10 days to do that. We did set the meeting. And then bond counsel would have to have, from the engineer, some details enough to put a bond resolution together.
We also have to go through the seeker process, the type 2 action, so seeker before the bond resolution, so...
So we're looking at, do you guys have a thought, or have you seen something or saying something?
28th?
I think it's good.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
I actually know. It's probably in the minutes that we, anybody have a minute to look at the workshop minutes of...
Yeah, probably the last, last one, 34.
Yeah, I think, but anyway, like Brent said, we're trying to just sequence it a little bit so we can get into the running. Am I personally thinking, if we don't get the grant, we're not gonna be able to do it. You know, we're not gonna spend 1.8 million off the repair, so, um, we have to try. Good being a workshop, I remember doing the stairs.
So would, I mean, yeah, I thought about vacations being the minutes?
Pardon me?
It was like, oh, I think I might be going on vacation, I might be doing...
Yeah, I got, yeah, we have a special meeting, August 28th, 7:00 PM, so yeah, it was 28th. So that is set, so probably tomorrow or Wednesday, we should get a notice out from the clerk's office, talk to bond counsel, but we'll line it up for 28th to do the next step of it. But with that in mind, we have to get the engineer to start filling out the application and so forth, so we have two resolutions here. Mr. Brent, do you, are you more familiar with these from Friday meetings, or?
No, I just saw, they were delivered last Friday, so...
Yeah.
Is this something we do at the 28th meeting?
Yeah, let's see, one is Village of Red Hook PFOA removal and water system resiliency upgrades, seeker type 2 classification.
Yeah, this is something we would do with seeker, the first one.
Yeah, that's the actual seeker. The one we were looking at earlier, funding application, I think this one we need to do tonight. Let me read it out loud and we can decide, it's prepared by the engineers. PFOA slash S removal and water system resiliency upgrades project, board resolution, WIA IMG funding application. Whereas the Village of Red Hook, Dutchess County, here and after the village, has established a public benefit to the village residents of the upgrades to the water system. And whereas the project includes PFOAS removal and resiliency upgrades to the village, town interconnect, and the village water tower. And whereas the village has the opportunity to apply for grant funds from New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIA, which may fund up to 3 million or 60% of the total project costs, and from the intermunicipal water infrastructure grant fund, IMG, which may fund up to 10 million or 40% of the total project cost. So they're looking at a secondary to make it 100%. Whereas the total project cost is estimated at 1.8 million. And whereas the village is prepared to contribute matching funds for the drinking water state revolving fund loan program, and therefore be resolved that the Village of Red Hook is authorized to submit the WIA IMG grant application, the village mayor is authorized to sign the WIA IMG grant application, the village agrees to provide the matching funds required for the WIA IMG projects through drinking water state revolving fund.
So I thought that we, we were not going to act on the water, intermunicipal water infrastructure grant, part of it, just doing the, um, the WIA part.
I couldn't follow it.
I think it's part of the same program, I think it's called the WIA IMG.
Um, I didn't follow what you started to say first.
I don't think we're really participating in the intermunicipal water infrastructure grant component of it. But I think it's the same application, so...
So can we leave it?
Yeah, we may, but it just cover all bases. Because then this one would, would mean that we would have to work with the town on this one. So...
I don't think so.
Yeah, intermunicipal water.
The IMG part?
Yeah. So anyway, I think it's part of the same grant.
I'm reading the words here again, let's see. Well, as I read it, we're essentially giving our guys the okay to put the application together and get it filed, so, um, I'm okay with it. Larry did point out it's resolution number 36 of 2019.
Is this 37? Didn't we just do 36?
Nah, well, nope.
That's 36.
So I would move that we head toward filing an application, and if successful, we can make the next decision, the next steps, see what we get. So will we adopt the resolution 36? And I heard a second from Mr. Brent. And, uh, sure. And, um, and we have a second from Brent, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll have to do that letter. The paper. Okay, then the other resolution, is that before the 28th? Let's see. We've gotten through the regular business, I had two other things while we're all together, and then we can open up to public comment. One of our meetings might have been workshop, we had, now I was here, somebody came in and they were talking about speed and vehicle traffic on Park Avenue, and, um, one, we were kicking around traffic calming and options and so forth. I know we did have the police department put the speed trailer out, I haven't seen the data come back yet, I'd like to see that. Pardon me?
It hasn't been on.
I saw it on.
What do you mean?
I went by a couple times over the last week or so and it's blank.
Oh, it's, you mean, it's there but not? Oh.
Nope, no numbers, nothing popping, no lights, I don't know. If you just parked, dude, no place else to stick it.
Hmm, let's put it on Park Avenue.
If you're going slow, it should say you're going 10 miles.
Yeah, it should say, should be lit, yeah. Hmm, okay.
Plug in.
Yeah, I know they have a battery in them, oh, I'll see, because what I was looking for was, there's a chip in there that they can pull out and say 800 cars went down or 400, and we did tell that one person that Dutchess County, Pecosse, I guess now just Dutchess County Transportation Council does monitor traffic count, and by separation of strips, they can actually get speed. But I'd like to see our own data and also show that we're, I think the speed trailer puts a little down pressure on speed, people say, oh, it kind of catches their attention a little bit. One idea was striping, but I did get, somehow the word got around to the neighborhood and they, the word I heard was they didn't really want striping, I don't know if they thought we were gonna put like double yellow, you don't know, passing type things, or...
Because there was striping on Park Avenue.
Yeah, but, then Dan got a quote for 1,300 bucks, but I was on vacation, wrote back, let's hold off till we decide what, I'd like to see the data and think more like what would work. In a way, striping might not be effective, and it might make it look more like a freeway or a, I don't know, you know, we were thinking, we were thinking of a bike lane, you know, we were toying with some other...
Well, right now, Park Avenue is 24 feet wide.
The whole street?
Yeah, and the streets back here in the southwest quadrant are 20 feet wide, so that extra four feet, you know, it's straight and flat and people do fly.
It is a, unfortunately, bypass, you know, it's, you get southbound on 9, you jump through there, get to London, and, but anyway, I was loath to, like I said, I did get some response from the residents, and then, um, I think we'll hold off on striping if everybody's okay with that. We did, um, let's see, one thought, I don't know if I could deputize Ms. Jen Norris here, but with the departure of Ari, Lara and I were looking at the website today, the new website, and that was one of our projects she helped design, and the beauty of the new website was that we no longer need to have a paid outside administrator, we can make the changes and inserts ourselves. But with the departure of Ari, there's nobody that was up on how to do that. So Sarah and Bowden was the key person at the town that helped with the Civic Plus contract, we piggybacked off that. We're trying to find more info on how to do it. Do you have the wherewithal or time to talk with Sarah or do something over next week or something, or? Just trying to, we have some names from Civic Plus after you and I talked, I looked for more passwords, but I don't see a password left to us by the departing, and the clerk's on vacation this week, so like, but it's a little bit embarrassing to not have our minutes and certain things that should be there, there. They have us up to January, so somehow they pulled existing minutes, but I don't know why the more recent minutes are not there. But anyway, I'm looking for somebody to kind of just make a phone call or two and recreate...
Um, I, I have some things going on, of a personal nature, and this next two months is gonna be nuts.
Busy?
Um, after beginning of school and this other issue is resolved and hard scrabble, I can probably do it.
Well, no, I'll work on it, it's, I had a thought.
Timing is everything, and right now this is unfortunately not the right data.
I hunted down some sent emails to identify names, we'll work at it with our staff, okay. And one last thing for me, at one of our meetings, we were reviewing the controller's audit results for us, and by August, I got an extension to August 15th to send in our written response. And a little bit of fun, we had the exit interview two, three days before I went on vacation, and it was the auditor and his direct manager, and I did get them to change, remember they were including some insurance numbers in one of the findings that, and I proved to them that when we buy our workers' comp for the volunteer firemen, that that $70,000 number gets reduced to about 18,000 because we have a shared services deal with the town, and we get dividends back at the end of the year. So he's agreed to reduce that one number. And then it was kind of interesting, he, um, they had an August 5th deadline, they wanted our written response, we had reviewed that one written response, which I can put up here again. And I said, but a lot of the comments are written that, to the board of trustees of the Village of Red Hook, I said, look, there's not gonna be another board meeting until the 12th, so how can the board even respond by the 5th, you know? So they did finally concur that they would, uh, go with that. So what I wanted to do is talk about it a little bit, see if I can find my document. There it is. Those who attend regularly will recognize this, but, um, what I wanted to show is the success we've had, and I've had council look at it too, and I circulated something, general municipal law 104B says we can exempt insurance and professional service expenses from our formal procurement policy. And it makes sense, and we're staying with that position, we concur there, and council looked at it, he says, he sees it the same way we see it. And then, let's see, we did, like you all know, in March, April this year, 2019, we upgraded our procurement policy to increase those very, very low limits that were requiring three quotes, from between 299 and 1999, so we're staging that to them. And then one of their other issues with us was, um, we created that position of our controller, and in my opinion, that has helped us really turn around with all of our work, with the controller, the financial performance, and we're staying with that position too, that, you know, it's just an effective step, and with home rule capabilities, we can decide who we need and want to augment financial transactions within our operation. So, um, so what I was gonna do is, I circulated it to all of you, I just want to be able to say that the board has seen it, and I have, it has to go in two separate letters, it's actually two components of the audit, one will be the procurement claim, and claim auditing, and then the other one will be clerk treasurer duties. And they'll go on separate letterheads, I like to get them out of here before August 15th. And I know the trustee who is not here, he did comment back, he's, remains okay with the wording and the stance and so forth, and I think everybody else was good at the last meeting, so nothing's changed. But the big thing is, they did change, they did bang down that one member. So we'll go with that. It still goes up, further people review it in Albany and so forth, and, uh, and the auditor was funny, he said, I thought he was joking, but it sounds like corporate world where you get to review the auditor, like, you know, what do you call it, thing, you know, survey rather? So I was like, hmm. But, uh, anyway, that'll be interesting. So I'll crank some, uh, two letters out on letterhead and get it off. That being said, we would go to public comment, then we could jump into executive and then we'll get out of here. Mr. Beekman of, anything on your mind?
I'd like to ask about the sidewalks that were repaired recently, they were left open for like three weeks. I think that's a brainless thing to do, because given the number of people walking, skateboarding, bicycling, and driving, staring at their phones, and I could leave not open trenches all over the place, I'm surprised you didn't have a problem. But to go through and... weeks is ridiculous, that should be no other than a couple of days.
Well, could you be more specific? I don't like the word brainless, but um where were they? Where were they?
You know, negligent, I don't know, I mean
Where were they?
The catch basins.
All the catch basins.
On East Market.
Sidewalk and, and, and the, and the street, so you had a gap up to eight inches deep in both the street and that, and the curb for a few weeks.
And they were surrounded by cones.
Well, they got sidewalk done, they did, they got the street done.
And they, they put cones around that.
That was towards the end, I guess some complaint, but the thing is, people who are looking at their phones are not looking where they're going. They have it that for that length of time, there's no excuse for that.
I don't think it was three weeks either.
Three weeks.
You think it was?
For that own village, when you dug up your sidewalk, that got done the next day.
To be honest, I appreciate the comment, are they fixed, are they fixed?
They did fix it, it's done.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It's good, but I think whoever planned it, to leave it open like that for three weeks is
Yeah, it sounds odd, yeah, I, I believe you, but it sounds odd, three weeks is kinda long, very long.
I'll watch it, I couldn't believe it, what they waiting for.
Yeah, no, was the weather bad, any, I mean, yeah, we'll take your comment for next
On that thing, on, on the interconnection of the water.
Yeah.
I mean, I was here twenty-five years ago, and it was mandated by the county.
Oh, yeah.
Engineers said, look it up.
Yeah.
It didn't work that day, from that day on, because of the pressure differences.
Yeah.
Hasn't worked since, so either get, the county should step in, send their engineers in some way, with some kind of, because the other ones who did it, and if it's not gonna work, just do away with it.
Hmm, yeah, okay, well, look at these guys coming
It wasn't the town required asking for it, it wasn't the village asking for it, the county stepped in, experts, and said, don't, interconnection, sounded like a good idea, but it didn't work from day one.
Okay.
Maybe the county should come up with a solution, and maybe even they should pay for it.
Yeah, right, that'd be good.
They're taking up all the waters, no, anyway, I mean, maybe down the line, that would be the ones to go, because they can feed from the north down, they already come up through Satsburg. The big plan is they're probably gonna run it, yes, because they've got the technology, people to do this.
They do.
Small, small town or village to operate a system, it gets more and more expensive every year.
Yeah, we do know from our dealings with the Hoffman Traditions, that the Waste War Authority, although they are skilled, their admin fees are really high, like it's a multiple, quite a bit higher than what we charge for water, because of, they have a lot of overhead with, because they're essentially also funding totally failed systems somewhere else, you know, whereas ours are functional.
We're gonna end up with that here, either between the systems we have here, eating some of the old defections that we don't own the property on, and a sewer system which is gonna be very expensive to operate.
Well, right now, the, the authority can't take it over without standing with a debt obligation, so with the water project, we just started repaying back a thirty-eight year loan, so they, they wouldn't be able to, we can't transfer our debt obligation to the authority. Um with the sewer project, we'd be the same, since we're being funded by federal funds, the USDA, so at that period, you know, who's ever in charge in the village has to invite the authority to come in, they just don't come in on their own regard, they have to be invited to operate and participate, so Tivoli just recently went through the process, the town did, you know, with that part of, the town for Hoffman Farms, you know, the traditions at Red Hook, that was in agreement by the town with the authority to create a park county or zone of assessment for the water, and we went through a similar system for the first go around with the sewer, with the park county sewer district, so that took agreement, but that took the invitation by both the village and the town to the county to come in.
Really quickly.
So they're not, it's not like they're taking over, they're invited to help.
Well, yeah, because the expense, the small community can't afford it, and on the bigger, on the bigger scale, they can operate on a different level.
Well, right now, that's the way we're looking at it, we're, we're doing pretty good, we have, we're in, in, in the black on, on the, the water fund, um we did hire an outside operator for that, so it's more qualified and better backup system, so we're, we're doing a pretty good job with the water right now. Sewer, we don't know until we get it, right?
I don't know.
And that's be
That thing scares me.
And that's being held up by the county, so, you know, feel free to call the county and ask them where they're
A month before, are you gonna fuck with them?
Yeah, ask them when, when they're gonna give us the approval.
This is a little tongue in cheek, but I was on vacation up along the seacoast in New England, and being a politically elected person, you know, you always look at what's going on, what's the story locally, so the neighborhood I pulled into, we're, we're renting a house, there's a village election for August tomorrow, thirteenth, but I was gonna send a picture to Brent, there's a position in the village government up there, sewer trustee, it's like, it's like that was the job, so maybe we could expand our board and you can be sewer trustee.
I'm not gonna need that, I tell you, that's just not sure.
I was like, who's the poor dude that gets to be sewer trustee, oh my goodness.
Well, it's a lot of money, you can pay that for a lot of money, because, but they've got a run through, probably technology.
And there were like, a couple people running, like one yard had this guy's name, and one yard had this guy's name, I was like, oh wow, hot, hot issue to be
Existing positions, you can plug in somebody in, but
But it was kinda comical, um but just to clarify one thing, the county, the Waste War Authority, they take essentially failed situations is what they specialize in, and then, like I said, their admin fees, it would not save the village person any money, because their admin fee is higher than we charge for the price per gallon, and um so we're doing a better financial deal still, you know, it's uh, but time will tell, but we'll work on that. Anyway, I wanted to move to executive session, I don't think we'll conduct any business when we come out, I wanted offer that we move in for regard, um issues regarding employment of a particular individual, and then secondly, a matter in litigation, um is there a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it was like eight thirty-eight, we'll be back not too long, we'll be back. You know, I have to look at my computer, it shows eight fifty-three, so we're down what, fifteen minutes? Um I would move, we move from executive to regular session again? Do a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um yeah, like I said, nothing came up that we need to vote on out here in regular session, um we had public comment, and I know the board has had chances to talk on different items than anything else that came up since we moved in and out of sessions here, um therefore, we need to do two things, authorize that the checks be released based on our audits, I know I went through them, Brent went through them, did you guys get through them, okay, the vouchers, so uh I would ask that we um approve payment of the bills after the audit, audit's been done, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, as is our course, Mr. Kavalec, anything you wanna say tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second that as usual, and all in favor?
Aye.
Goodnight, everybody.